Bad motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, motion made and seconded. All in favor of said motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, thank you. Tonight we have a public hearing. Under the public hearing is a proposed ordinance establishing establishing the 2021 general fund operating budget and tax levy. A public hearing is a portion of our meeting where anybody can speak on the agenda item for the evening. And so at this time, we would open up the microphone for people to speak in the public hearing. Please give us your name and your address. And you can zoom in and or those present can also stand up to the microphone. Okay, Mr. Eddy?
So again, if you're in the public, if you can virtually raise your hand, if you hit the participant button and hover below your name, you should see an option for raising your hand. Or if you're on a cellphone, that would be star nine if you wish to speak during the public hearing.
Okay, I'm gonna ask if anybody like to speak in the public hearing. First call? If I ask if anybody like to speak in the public hearing. Second call?
This is Naomi Cummings. We got a couple here.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Eddy.
So Naomi Cummings, your mic's open. So Naomi, if you could give your name and address, and then the floor is yours.
Well, thank you. My name is Naomi Cummings. I'm the executive director of The Bridge to Hope, and that is located at 2110 North Fourth Avenue Northeast. And I spoke to you all two weeks ago, so I'm not going to, you know, go through all that again. I know you guys are facing some tough budget cuts. And I just, you know, wanted to implore you to support some of those, like stepping stones, and of course, ourselves, The Bridge to Hope, and others that are providing safety nets to people in our community. I mean, it's tough times, and it looks like it's gonna get harder. So I think it's just really critical that we, you know, that we keep our eyes out for everybody, because we're all in this together. And as they say, we all do better when we all do better. So, so thank you for all the work you do. I know you have a lot of tough decisions to make.
The organization might be better served through a different relationship with the city. A relationship in which the organizational and the leadership structure is not purely self-regulated, at least as it relates to the city's interests. I think a self-regulated situation like the Mabel experiences right now could allow the financial interests of the city, its taxpayers, the Mabel's donors and its sponsors to perhaps not be properly represented over time. So with that, basically, just Mr. Mayor, council members, thanks for letting me speak tonight. I'd like to make myself available. I am available for the rest of the meeting. If there's something you'd like to follow up with me on tonight, and I'm certainly available anytime after this meeting as well. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Again, we're in public hearing regarding the ordinance establishment for the 2021 general operating budget. Mr. Eddy?
Next up, I see Patrick Pessek-Herig. Patrick, Patrick, we've opened up your microphone. If you would give your name and address, please.
Yes, my name is Patrick Pessek-Herigus, and I live at N, or 421, 421st Street North. I live in the city now, so I need to learn to put the N after. And I want to also comment about the Mabel Tainer. I was part of an organization called the Mabel Tainer Advocates, that a couple of years ago, several years ago, actually at this point, tried to, we worked for transparency and accountability on the part of the Mabel Tainer Board. And so I want to reinforce what Steve Wakehorn has just said. It appears that there is currently a revived clamor for openness on the part of the board. I want to say about, it is a nonprofit organization, and as a nonprofit, it owns the Mabel Tainer. A nonprofit is a legal entity that endures through time, even though the board membership changes. And those boards can be self-replicating, and they establish their own rules of order, their own bylaws. And so they can choose to be private. That's a dominant word in their description, a private nonprofit. And the privacy is what I think is the critical element here. The only way for the Mabel Tainer Board to be accountable to the people on whom it depends is for it to be either publicly owned, not private, or to be a cooperative. Those are the only two forms I can think of where accountability is built into the structure. Otherwise, this situation is simply going to persist. And I think that the city council is in a unique position because of its funding to the organization to ask for it, and even demand for it to become a more accountable kind of an organization. It's a wonderful, wonderful organization. It was a gift to the community from Andrew and Bertha Tainer. And they, they wanted it to be owned by the community. That's very clear from the historical records. And it is not owned by the community. It is owned by a legal entity, which is a private nonprofit organization. So I just want to place those concepts before you as you consider your budget. And I'm very grateful for the opportunity to speak. Thank you for zooming during the pandemic. I appreciate that.
Well, thank you, Patrick. And again, we are in public hearing regarding the 2021 general fund operating budget and tax levy. Mr. Eddy?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the next one up is a cellphone. The last floor is 1894, cellphone 1894. Your microphone is open. If you wish to, please give your name and address. You'd have to hit star six to unmute.
My name is Emily Wees, and I live at 621 West Elm Avenue. I too am speaking out about Mabel Tainer. I was active in a fundraising activity to try and eliminate the debt of $95,000. Our committee, our committee was abruptly stopped. I too am available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Emily. And again, we are in public hearing. Mr. Eddy, anymore?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, it looks like Larry. Larry, we've opened up your microphone. If you wish to speak, please give your name and address.
This is Lucy Widener. I live at E3478, 378th Avenue in Menominee. And I just want to say that I submitted a letter to the city council, represented to, representing transparency. And I am available if you guys have any questions for me.
Okay, thank you, Lucy. Again, Mr. Eddy, if you got anybody else who would like to speak online?
Mr. Mayor, I'm seeing no other hands up at this time.
Okay, I will call from anybody that would like to speak that are present in the public hearing portion. Okay, last call for public hearing, either online or in person. Okay, again, last call, public hearing. Okay, we'll close the public hearing and move on with the rest of our meeting. Under public comments, public comments is a portion of our meeting where anybody can speak for three minutes or less on agenda items for the evening. Please give us your name and your phone number, and we will, we will go between people that might be here and or online. So we'll open it up, Mr. Eddy?
So again, online, just raising your hand. If you can hit the participants button, and somewhere near the bottom of your screen, you should see an option for raising your hand. Or it's star nine if you're on a cellphone. At this time, we see.
Okay, we have a participant here in person. We will have him come forward.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Brian Notoff, 2103 Dairyland Road, Menominee. I'm here speaking, item 6B, representing Hidden Valley Commercial Properties. Just as a bit of background, I was before you last year, Hidden Valley had two separate options on two separate properties that we agreed to extend for, I believe, a total of three years for each of them. We did actually exercise one last year, and that phase one of that building is actually complete. If you ever want to go out and see it, it's 5362 Eagle Point Road. Approximately one-fourth of that building is already leased, and the tenant moved in last week. So that's been a very good success for us so far. The leasing people are now working on filling the rest of the phases, but and we provided that information to the city if they ever want to come out and take a look at it. We would normally do open houses and tours, but with the pandemic, everything's a little bit strange this year. The other one is the option we had on the property that the city administrator or Mr. Eddy will have to help me out on a good description of it. We originally had property where the cooperative is going with their new facility, and we agreed to swap it over to some property farther west. We have a tenant that is interested in building a new building that was originally slated to begin construction this fall. Unfortunately, with COVID, much like everything else, everybody shelved a project for one year. The tenant has committed to starting that project. So our original development agreement indicated we would break ground by December 31st of 2020. We're asking that that be pushed off to 2021. That will be the phase one of that project as well. There will be approximately 17 acres left. We're currently working on a schematic, and we'll presenting that in Q1 or Q2 next year to you to kind of see what we're planning on for the rest of that. The city administrator did express some concern because originally that was designed to, we had to break ground within one year and complete within 30 months. He, the accommodation he requested was that if we were delaying for a year, that we shorten up the back end, so that the end result would be no later than originally scheduled. So we'd agreed that once construction starts, it would be completed within 18 months instead of 30 months. Happy to take any questions you might have.
Okay, well, we may bring you back up, Brian, for some more questions, but thank you for the information.
Thank you.
Okay, Brian Notoff. Okay, that brings us back to anybody else who would like to comment or in public comments. Mr. Eddy, do you have anybody?
I'm seeing no one, Mr. Mayor, online or in the audience.
Okay, last call for public comments. Okay, we'll close public comments and move on with the rest of our meeting. Under 5A, or yes, 5A, which is discussion and possible motion adoption of the proposed 2021 general fund operating budget and tax levy. Before we get started, I could probably make a couple of comments on this regarding the 2021 budget and what we've been faced with. Lowell got the numbers back from the state of Wisconsin rather late, but he was, but he was able to put together a budget that I think is truly above board. And congratulations to Lowell and staff and the city council. We are holding the line. We are looking at no increase in the levy for this year. However, we have cut budget expenses across the board. Different department heads have come forward and offered up different things. Lowell took out and sharpened his pencil pretty sharp and made dotted lines all over the place. So yeah, not all the staff members are completely pleased by what we've done. But I think that it's a good way this year to prove to the taxpayer that we can hold our own. And so in regards to that, the levy would stay the same, however, being that the valuation has changed for the state of Wisconsin. And in order to be eligible for our expenditure restraint program, which is $132,000, we have budgeted in a 17 cent increase, but that's in the mill rate. So the mill rate will go up in accordance with the valuation, but our tax levy will stay the same. Now, that presents sort of some, some interesting phenomenon. And what that is, is what Lowell has come up with is a really restricted amount of money in our reserve, which is called the contingency fund. And this year, we're looking at going into with approximately $25,000 with a contingency fund. And we can handle this because we've got reserves set aside. But it is the least amount that I can remember since I've been here that we've set aside in the contingency fund. But the other interesting thing is, when negotiations were held with both the police and the fire departments, and, and everything put into play, we decided only fair for 2% increase across the board for all of the other employees. So we factored that in already into this budget. And as what you see in front of you tonight, option A would give you a tax rate of 7.94, which is an increased mill rate. However, the proposed tax levy itself stays the same as 2020 at $7,118,000. That is a 0% tax increase. Hats off to administration for putting this together. Change in the mill rate is 2.45%, estimated contingency of $25,100. With that, I will turn the microphone over to Lowell, and he can take you a little bit further down the line here. So, Mr. Prangy?
I think the mayor's did a very fine job giving you the overview. Since the last meeting, I did go through, I tweaked a couple of things. I did cut a little bit out of health insurance out of the account in that we do have fairly decent fund balance. We'll try and live off of there if we need to for the next year. I trimmed some fuel expenditures that appear to be, maybe we can live without next year. Police and fire overtimes, I did cut back a little bit. I know the police used to wear that denny. That's kind of new to you, but not a whole lot. The thing is, if we have to pay it, we pay it. And as the mayor said, we'll live off a little bit of our reserves if we have to next year. Hopefully that doesn't come to fruition. Made a few other tweaks. Engineering got cut completely. No, I teasing on them, teasing on that one. So if you have any specific questions, we did email out electronically to you, and I can touch on any other questions or locations that I, I might have adjusted. But again, there was a few thousand here. I did get, the library also offered up, they could reduce a little bit under their requirements with the county by a few thousand. So it all kind of came together, and it's not a big contingency, obviously. But as the mayor said, the wages are included in that already. So we should be, we will be good to go come January 1.
Thank you, Mr. Prangy. The only thing I neglected to say is, we had really good growth this year, but the majority of it was in our industrial park. And so that doesn't evaluate out very well when it comes to, it will in the future when those two districts close. But as it, for now, you know, we needed across the board growth, and the state handed us down some pretty tough numbers. So.
I think the sheet, excuse me, this is Lowell, the sheet Randy had up maybe reflects that. If you go up in the, Randy can pull it back up, way up in the corner, in the right-hand corner. If you look, the assessed value did go up by about $8 million this year, maybe almost $9 million. Our assessment ratio keeps falling, and that's why we're doing a reassessment based on this budget. And then also, if you look at the next line, the third one, it's the tit increment was up by almost $40 million. So any of that growth got sucked up into the, the tax increment districts. And there was, there was an overage a year before that we're paying for, or an underage, I guess, and that was an overage. And so hopefully, that'll balance out in another year. But we, I think we can get through this okay. And, and again, we put a little away every year for the last few years. So hopefully, we can, you know, we've got that to fall back on if need be.
Thank you, Mr. Prangy. The other thing that I might add to this is, we are the only tax entity that I know of in the area that's not raising the levy. I believe the other taxing entities, school district, tech college, and county, I think are all taking an increase, if my memory serves me right. So good work from the city administrator and his staff. And I think this is going to be the best, as far as what we've got to work with, I don't see a better remedy. We want that 132,000 that comes from the state. Otherwise, we could go for, you know, different options. But in order to get that option to, for that 132,000, this is kind of the parameters that we needed to stay within. So I guess with that, I would open it up for council if you have any questions. Otherwise, this is an ordinance, and we will have to introduce it and adopt it if somebody would like to do so. Go ahead. I would open the floor. Mr. Eddy?
And waive the ratings.
Right, yeah. So I guess at this point, then I will open up the floor if anybody has any questions, or if you'd like to make a motion to adopt said ordinance, we could do so too. Okay, Lee, go ahead, please.
Yeah, I think we should discuss a little bit about the Mabel Tainer. There's obviously some problems that maybe we're not completely aware of. I've been aware of some of them. First of all, I think we need to support the Mabel. I'm not against supporting the Mabel. But I come from this, that both Jill, my wife, and I both have been on the board. She was board president back a few years ago. And I'm troubled by what I've heard from some of the folks that have left the board in the last couple of years, not, not when their terms are up, but they just left, and very concerned about transparency between the executive committee and the board. People saying that they, things are going on, and as board members, they never knew about it. And also, I'm troubled by the decision that was made with that $95,000 that Emily Wees mentioned, that they raised about $50,000 of it to eliminate the other 45,000 they took from the endowment fund, which is, that's a big no, 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 you don't, you don't go into your endowment fund. So I think there's, I don't know if you do with the motion or just what, I think there needs to be a meeting between the Mabel Board and the city administration on talking about some of these problems we're hearing before we release the money. I think the 60,000 needs to be in the, in the, in the motion and approved, but it's not released until there's a better understanding of what's, what's going on at the Mabel.
Okay, thank you, Lee. Robin, if you, go ahead, please.
I was, I agree with Lee, and I was gonna ask if we couldn't see the audits, the internal and external, because it is a lot of money that we're giving, and I think we should have a little bit more oversight of, of this. I'd be happy with the administration meeting with their board. They would have a good handle on it. But I think we need to look at this. I'm concerned with all the, the letters that we got too.
Okay, thank you, Robin. I'm gonna, the floor is still open. Go ahead, Ryland.
Um, I guess I was kind of surprised that the, we heard from as many people as we did. I was also a little surprised to hear that the mayor had asked at least one of the people to write a letter. But, you know, being on the board, it's running, running a nonprofit is stressful, and, you know, not everybody sees, sees eye to eye, as I'm sure all of you know, being on other committees and so on. You know, nobody has any money. And in the last year especially, things have not been going well. But, you know, I've, I've talked to a number of the people that spoke about different board structures and their ideals of what they would like to see, and discuss, you know, how practical some of those are, or impractical some of those are. So I'm not sure, you know, what, what changes are practical. You know, I agree with Lee as well, though, that, you know, taking from the endowment to pay off debt was not the ideal situation to do. But renewing that loan that had come due had a cost of thousands of dollars that, you know, having a financial planner as a board member and a fundraising, stump fundraiser employee as a board member, you know, they, we all didn't feel it was ideal, but also that it was the, one of the better options that was before us, because, you know, throwing away thousands of dollars every year in interest is not ever, it comes out of the general fund then. And it's, you know, doesn't do any work to pay interest.
Okay, thank you, Ellen. Yeah, you know, it's, it's a, it's a tough situation, and we certainly enjoy the Mabel Tainer. We certainly enjoy what it does for the community. I know whenever there's concerns, you know, we like to air those concerns out. You know, it's, 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 it's truly is a gem for our community, and we truly want to do everything we can in our power to cherish that gem forever. And I, and I do support the Mabel Tainer, and I think that the $60,000 that we've got allocated in the budget needs to stay in the budget for them. How we handle it, maybe Lee's suggestion of, of meeting with the Mabel Tainer staff, or I mean, not the Mabel Tainer staff, but the Mabel Tainer Board might be a good venue so that questions can be asked and vetted, and get to the bottom of anything that might be or could be wrong. I'm not saying anything is, but if there is something, maybe, maybe two heads are better than one to try to fix some of these things. So I guess with that, you know, I'll just keep the floor open. But I think we definitely, I agree with Lee and Robin about keeping the budget monies there for the Mabel and working through it. So I guess we've got more hands up. Mary, you got your hand up?
I do. I also support the Mabel. I, I feel that, you know, that's, that's not something we can let go of. But I also have concerns with what was written and what I've heard. I would like to see that the 60,000 stay in, but I would also like to see it withheld until we can get to the bottom of this. And then we'll talk about the release of that money. That would be my, my suggestion, which leads us to a meeting with either exec committee or the full board, or however it ends up being.
Okay, Mary, thank you. I see Jan track, so you've got your hand up?
Yes, I noticed in the leader telegram early this month that there was a cultural grant, grant of $72,899 that went to the Mabel Tainer. So that should help them. And hopefully, we can get to the bottom of all of this before the 60,000 is released. I agree with everyone that there needs to be someone looking into this before the 60,000 is released. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jan. The other thing to remember, the payments are made to the Mabel Tainer in quarterly. So it's four payments of 15,000, I believe, is what the payment schedule is. So I guess we can, we can work through this. And then, is there another hand up? Ryland, you got your hand up? Okay, go ahead, Ryland. Oh, you're muted.
I just wanted to add that I'm in full support of the city administrator sitting down with the Mabel Tainer Board or the executive committee. You know, we've submitted all the financials for audits and, you know, try to have best practices for, you know, proper oversight for a nonprofit. And, you know, I, I feel like, you know, we're doing the, as a board, doing the best that we can. But, you know, oversight is always good. So if, if it puts the city staff and the rest of the city council at ease to have the city administrator, you know, look things over personally, I, I don't think that there's anything that's, you know, that, anything questionable that's been going on that, you know, should raise any red flags.
Okay, thank you. I know there was a group of individuals, two out online, that said if we had any questions for them, that we could waive the rules, and we could come back to them. I was, I was just a little curious. Lowell, do we have a number for how much was in the endowment fund and how much is left? And how much is being pulled out for operations on a normal basis? Or is that something that we don't have?
I don't have, but at my fingertips. I think looking today, the endowment, and Ryland probably knows better than anybody, I think it was still around $215,000 in the endowment. I guess the operations, probably not a good year to look at operation expenses, that's in revenues.
Okay. And one other question I'd have too is, what about building upkeep and managing the building long term? Is there money being put away for that, or?
Fair question. I, you know, does there book show depreciation, maybe, but is it being funded? I can't answer.
Who was the person that was on that was one of the treasurer people? Do we have?
I think Mr. Wakehorn.
Was it Mr. Wakehorn? Is he, Steve's here, right?
I can tell you, there's, there's some, there's. I can tell you, there's, there's some, there's, there's two people online, both saying Mabel Tainer in the, on the attendees would like to speak if you waived the rules. I don't, I don't have their names, but there's.
Are they waving at us?
They're waving at you, I think, or somebody. They got their hands up. One's called the Mabel Tainer Theater, the other one's called Mabel Tainer.
Let's, let's, um, well, can we suspend the rules? I'd, I'd like to ask the person that was bringing some of this stuff forward, if he could elaborate a little bit on some of the funding and then we'll come back and we'll talk to the Mabel Tainer. Maybe they could, between them, they can answer questions. Counsel, I would be request for, um, permission to waive the rules to bring us, is it Steve? Steve, Steve Weghorn? Up to?
Steve initially spoke, yes.
Okay, if we could raise the rules to, uh, have Steve speak. So go ahead, counsel. Nathan, go ahead.
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to waive the rules and let
Okay.
for public comments.
Okay, and is there a second to that?
I'll second it.
Okay, Robin Sweeney with a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Okay, Mr. Steve Weghorn, are you still out there?
Your mic's, your mic's open, Steve.
Yes, I am here, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, uh, what capacity did you serve when you were on the board?
So I was the, uh, marketing chair for a year and a half. I was the treasurer for about three months.
Okay, so, so you had access to the numbers. Can you, can you remember, can you give me some feedback of, of, uh, of, uh, the building maintenance and long-term, um, money set aside for building maintenance? Is, is there, is there a fund for that, or how do they work that?
Yeah.
Depreciation.
Yeah, that, that's a good question. I, i- in my time and looking into the numbers, I didn't see that that was a concerted effort. There was talk of establishing uh, some capital fundraising campaigns. Certainly, m- many of the details that would be in there, I don't believe I would be at liberty to divulge any of that specific detail here tonight. I would certainly recommend that that's the sort of question that would be posed back to the executive leadership of the Mabel Tainer. But, uh, yeah, to my knowledge and frankly, as a, as a, as treasurer, that was one of my concerns is the apparent ongoing erosion in the net asset value of the institution largely driven by that depreciation term.
Okay, and, and do you have access to how much was in the, um, uh, the fund, uh, the endowment fund and, and how, how that was used and over the years where it went? Uh, just curious. I, and I know these are gonna be questions too, that I'm sure that the administrator is gonna be asking the Mabel, but I'm just trying to get a handle on this to try to figure out what direction to take this this evening.
So i- in, in my tenure on the board, the only access to the endowment funds that I saw, that I recall seeing was to pay down the debt.
Okay. Okay, do you remember a dollar amount of the endowment fund?
Mr. Mayor, I, I don't remember a number accurately enough to be able to quote it here tonight.
Okay, well, you know, and, and again, I guess those are questions that we would probably, um, have for the Mabel. Uh, we certainly do enjoy the Mabel and we don't want any, any black eyes. Uh, I think that leaving the sixty thousand dollars in there, uh, in the budget for the Mabel and then meeting with the Mabel and, and working on, you know, some of these questions, I think might be a, a good format. Um, and I see that, uh, we've got, uh, some hands up from, I believe, a couple more speakers. So we don't quite know who they are, but it looks like it could be the Mabel. So I'd ask the council again if we could waive the rules. So a motion to waive the rules. Ryland, go ahead with the motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to waive the rules to allow, uh, somebody from the Mabel Tainer to, uh, speak.
Okay, and Mary, you got your hand up?
I'll second Ryan, Ryland's, uh, motion.
Okay, all in favor of, motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Okay, Mr. Eddie.
Uh, we just opened up the mic for, uh, Mabel Tainer. If you could introduce yourself and address, please.
Hi, Juan, this is Andrew Murcill, seven oh eight Twenty First Street North. I am the president of the Mabel Tainer Board. Sorry for the confusion. Um, I have a Zoom account for Mabel Tainer and so does Lucas Chase. Um, so, um, sorry for the confusion. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions. Uh, I will first start with some of the options or some of the questions that were posed. Uh, there's a question about the endowment fund. The endowment fund currently sits at roughly two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Now, in twenty nineteen, there was extreme growth because of the growth in the economy in our endowment fund. One of the things that we did, um, after consulting with Geraldine Kinderman, who at the time was our treasurer, who is the CFO for Wisconsin Private Union, uh, because we had such excellent growth in the endowment fund and as Ryland alluded to earlier, there was the potential for us to renew the loan that is an ongoing loan with, that was the ongoing loan with Bremer to pay off the original million dollar debt that the Mabel Tainer was left with after the renovation in two thousand and six, two thousand and seven. With the thousands of dollars that was gonna be incurred to extend the terms of the loan, the board felt it was advantageous to take the growth in the endowment only, uh, and put that towards the debt elimination. That is the only money that was touched from the endowment and it was just growth. It wasn't principal. The Mabel Tainer set a forth, uh, many years ago, um, a policy not to touch the base in the endowment fund and we have not done that. Now, one of the goals, the long-term goals is to make sure that we are growing the endowment fund so that we can potentially, if there's a rainy day such as a roof, um, that fails or anything like that, that we could potentially live off, not live off of, but touch some of the growth in the endowment to help pay some of those expenses, so those aren't being incurred by the city of Menominee. And that we're not gonna come and ask you for additional help. So that's the endowment component of it. We did not touch principal. We only touched the interest that was incurred, uh, on the initial, um, endowment fund. That was the end question about the endowment. As far as some of the other questions, you know, um, the board of directors is very happy to sit down with any members of the city council, whether it's administration or anything to discuss any questions that we can address that either from the letters or that the city council or administration has. I will mention that all of our Form nine nineties are filed with the United States government. So all of our financial information is available to anyone in the world to review. In addition, we would be happy to provide all of our audited financials that we have, um, that are done by an outside entity. So that's really important as well. There are components that, um, we have financial, we use best practices, having the former treasurer, who was the CFO of Wisconsin, Geraldine Kinderman. We made sure that we had a lot of different financial checks and balances. One of the, um, such as delegated signature authority, we have a private outside CPA that, um, does all of our audited financials every month for the board to review, um, as well as using WIPLY to do all of our audited financials. Those are all checks and balances that we put in place to make sure the Mabel Tainer is accountable, uh, especially for the use of the generous subsidy that we receive from the city. I will mention that several years ago, uh, the Mabel Tainer has been working towards becoming more financially independent. Several years ago, the Mabel Tainer used to receive eighty thousand dollars a year in the city subsidy. And we have, uh, most recently been receiving sixty thousand dollars. We have proven that we are able to be moving towards more financial independence. However, with the loss of a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars ticket revenue this year and the fact that it costs Mabel nine hundred dollars a day just to stay open, we are and would be very appreciative to make sure that the Mabel can get through this pandemic. Um, and with the city's help, we can make sure that the Mabel will be around for the next hundred and thirty years. We are also doing a, um, we're trying to exhaust all of our efforts in fundraising outside currently right now. We launched a Give Twenty and Twenty campaign, asking people to just donate twenty dollars. And of that campaign, we raised roughly twenty-one thousand dollars in the last two months and seventy percent of which is from new donors. So that's really great. That shows that there's a lot of support for the Mabel and a lot of people love the Mabel. Jan Traxler did also mention that we did receive the, um, Governor Evers Cultural Organization Grant. Um, we don't, we do not yet have that money in our account, but it was noted that we were awarded, um, seventy-two thousand dollars to help offset ticket sale. And that's definitely gonna help, but when we look at a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars in lost ticket revenue, it doesn't quite get us all the way there. So there are certainly components that we are trying to make sure that we are open and transparent as possible. Um, we'd be happy to sit down with any of the citizens that wrote letters to you. Um, it's unfortunate that none of them felt, uh, that they could or were willing to come to the board and ask these questions directly. Um, it's unfortunate that Steve Weghorn on his time on the board didn't ask these questions when he was on the board um, and, and resigned, but, um, we're always happy to meet with anybody who has questions and concerns about the Mabel. It's, it's really wonderful to see how many people in this community care about our Mabel and, um, want what's best for it. So with that, are there any questions?
You know, I don't know if there, there's probably is, Andrew. Um, I, one question that comes to mind, I guess, is just right out in front of me here that is because I wrote it down. Is the de- depreciation, depreciation and money set aside for future renovations and so forth of the Mabel? Um, maybe you could speak on that just for a second?
Sure. So with a hundred and thirty-year-old building, right, we make sure that we, um, include our depreciation costs with not only our monthly financials, but also our audited financials. This is just a standard, um, accounting practice to, as part of a, especially as part of a historic building, to make sure that we're building in there. Now, we are trying as hard as we can. We made some really good headway on putting together a comprehensive campaign for seven million dollars. That would be five million dollars for endowment growth. Like I had mentioned earlier, so that we can get to that point where we literally just be able to have some interest off the endowment every year, um, that would help us be more financially independent, as well as a two-point roughly two-point-three million dollar capital campaign, so that we're not having to come back to the city and ask for a bunch of money for another renovation like we did in two thousand and six and two thousand and seven. That two million dollars will help, um, get us to the point where we can have a historically appropriate roof. Um, as you can imagine, we do have some roof issues in a hundred and thirty-year-old building. So all of that depreciation value is part of just standard operating procedure. And we definitely are trying to get to the point where we have a rainy day fund, but in a pandemic, there is no rainy day fund. Um, we're just trying to make it so that we can keep the Mabel open to the community as best as we can.
Okay, thank you, Andrew. Is there any questions for, um, Andrew from council? I know there's probably a lot of questions to be asked, but Mary, go ahead, please.
I don't have any questions, but I'm wondering if we, you know, we maybe don't need to go deep into the weeds tonight. This would be, uh, in, any more discussion would probably be more appropriate, you know, when the administration, city administration meets with Mabel Tainer folks. Um, that would be my suggestion.
You could put that in the form of a motion and we could keep moving.
Does it need a motion?
Uh, it will need a motion to make this happen.
Are you talking about the?
Uh, no, the, the Mabel Tainer portion of the budget and then we could, and then we could, uh, move it forward and get through the budget portion. So if you just wanted to make a motion regarding the Mabel Tainer first, and then we can take up the, a motion to accept or not accept the budget.
Okay, yeah, I can make, I would like to make a motion that we, um, leave the sixty thousand dollars for the Mabel Tainer in the budget, um, with further discussion prior to the release of any of that money. That's good enough.
I think that motion is pretty self-explanatory. Um, I'm gonna refer to Ben. Ben, is that sound like a good, okay. Ben is shaking his, uh, uh, city attorney is shaking his, said yes, that that's a, uh, a, a, a good motion. Uh, does anybody wanna second that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, Chad Slu with a second. Any discussion? All in favor of said motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, now, um, we're gonna get, thank you, everybody for, uh, for that piece of information. Now, we're gonna go back to the budget itself. Uh, if you have any questions or, um, comments, or if anybody would like to make a motion, uh, we could introduce the ordinance and, and carry it through from there. Mary, got your hand up? Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, Chad, I guess Chad, Mary, you guys got a tie going, so.
She's the president.
No, no, go ahead.
Well, I guess Chad, it's in your park.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, adopt the proposed twenty-twenty-one tax levy as presented, um, part A. Is what I would like to make the, uh, motion on.
Option A, but before we even get started, I'm, what we're gonna do is we're gonna backtrack just a little bit and because of say ordinance, we're gonna have you introduce the ordinance. So are you willing to introduce the ordinance, Chad?
Yes, Mayor.
With option A.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so ordinance been introduced by Chad Slu with option A. And therefore we would, uh, go through and waive the first reading. And so we need a motion to waive the first reading. Somebody, Mary, you got your hand up?
Make a motion to waive the first reading.
And Ryland?
Aye, second Mary's motion.
Okay, motion made and seconded to waive the first reading. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and then we'll need a motion to waive the second reading. So if anybody'd like to make Jeff Luther with a hand up?
Make a motion to waive the second reading.
Okay, very good. Is there a second to that? Okay, Mary, go ahead, please.
I'll second, uh, Jeff's motion.
Okay, motion, uh, made and seconded to waive the second reading. Um, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you. And then Chad, getting back to you, if you'd like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance for the, um, the option A. Uh, the levy standing at seven million one hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, uh, we would hear that motion at this time.
I would like to make that motion, sir.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Motion made. Is there a second to that motion? Uh, I see hands everywhere. Lee, go ahead, please.
I'll make a motion or I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion made and second to adopt the, uh, twenty-twenty-one budget with a proposed tax levy of seven million one hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. Uh, it sounds like a good motion. I'm just gonna clarify, um, Mr. Prangy?
Good to go.
Okay, shaking his head, good to go. Mr. Ludeman, city attorney, good to go. Okay. With that being said, then for ordinance adoption, we need a roll call vote.
Sweeney? Yes. Schwabs?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Schlue?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Sommerfeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Traxler?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. We have a twenty-twenty-one budget. Thank you, everybody. Thank you for the hard work, administration and council. Moving on with the rest of our, uh, meeting this evening, under five B, proposed ice skating rink agreement. And this is a updated agreement, uh, with, uh, Christmas Miracle Network and, uh, Jake, uh, and gang, I should say, uh, a group of individuals. So the ice rink, uh, scenario, I think is a great thing for the city of Menominee. I think it's taken a little, some of the pressure off the rec department, uh, having to maintain a rink, especially a hockey rink. It's something brand new to the city. Uh, I think it's gonna be a great venue and, and I appreciate the support. So with that, uh, if anybody'd like to make a motion to, um, support the, uh, skating rink agreement, now'd be the time to make that motion.
And just so somebody didn't miss it, Lowell put the wrong lease in. We did send it out Friday, so Ben did a much shorter version, so hopefully you caught that, read the second one and not the first one that he prepared, but it's kinda straight to the point and, uh, and again, basically an insurance requirement, et cetera.
Right, right. So, um, Nathan, you got your hand up?
Yeah, uh, I guess I'll have to look for that new release. I, I haven't seen that quite yet, but the older one, um, it looked good to me. And so, you know, given the new lease and everything, I spoke with Jake. He seems really excited about it. Uh, the plan seems awesome. I think it's gonna be a great thing for, you know, the community to check out this winter. So I would like to make a motion to approve the project.
Okay, very good. So you're making a motion to go ahead with the, uh, skating rink agreement as proposed, the up for the, the new version of it?
Yes, sir. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Jan Traxler?
Um, I see the lease payment hasn't been filled in.
We didn't know exactly what to put in there. It's a, it, it's a one-year lease, Jan, I.
Do we, a dollar makes it legal? Do we, do we put a dollar in it or a hundred dollars or any, any dollar of value makes it a legal contract?
Gee, dollars sounds good to me.
Okay. Nathan's got a, a motion on the floor. Jan, would you like to second Nathan's motion?
Yes, I would. Thank you.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Um, that being said, I think we're good for a roll call vote. Ben Ludeman's, city attorney, has something to say here. Ben?
And I just wanna clarify, uh, Nathan, part of your motion would be to fill in the lease with the one dollar, correct?
Yes, yes, of course.
And Jan, are you good with that too?
Oh, absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, so as it stands now, we have a, a lease agreement with the Christmas Miracle Network, uh, nonprofit, uh, for a one-year agreement to, uh, operate a, 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 a rink and so forth on city property with a lease agreement, uh, to be, uh, one year at one dollar. And Mr. Prangy, you got your microphone on? No, you just got your microphone, okay. And Mr. Prangy, you got your microphone on. No, you just got your microphone. Okay, so that sounds good. Um, I think it's gonna be a great thing. I think that Jake's gonna knock it out of the park, you might say. It already has been knocked out of the park. But with that, we'll need a roll call vote.
Schwabs?
Oh, we'll get back to him. Keep going.
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Schluh?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Sommerfeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Traxler?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Sweeney?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Moving on with the rest of our meeting under six A, proposed resolution adopting the Dunn County Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan. I guess with that, I'll turn that over to Randy Idy.
Uh, thanks for some air. So this is a plan that we work with with the regional business, a regional planning. And um uh for the city to be part of that, that opens us up for possibly some grand money down the road having this natural mitigation plan in place. So um our recommendation is to um to
adopt.
To adopt it.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Idy. So I give the floor to the council. If anybody'd like to make a motion to adopt said motion or said uh mitigation plan? Jeff Luther, go ahead, please.
I'm ready to motion to adopt it.
Okay, is there a second to Jeff's motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, Chad Slu with a second. All in favor of said uh motion uh resolution adoption signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Under six B, proposed option agreement amendment with Hidden Valley Commercial Properties LLC. Uh, we do have um Brian O'Dolph here. If anybody has any questions, I could turn it over to um.
I just wanted to put the map up just for the actually the public too in the audience, just to know the area we're looking at. Um, County Road B is running north and south where my cursor is. Uh, five seventieth, six seventieth. City, and this is fifty-ninth street heading north, so the area is in yellow, just along the um se- red cedar.
Okay, Mr. Um Prangy?
And having given that background, so if you go back to highway B, that land where the Ellsworth Creamery El- Ellsworth Menominee is going in right there, Randy circling it, that was part of an original option that this group had with the city. Uh, we talked them into trading it for that area to the west. And part of that agreement was that there would be a three-acre development started on the north as Randy showing this year. They're asking for that to be moved back a year. And in return, I asked that we would at least reduce the completion time from thirty months to eighteen months in recognition of that that kind of trade-off. So that's all that's changing. And again, we had to come before council to get approval to execute that document. So if we can answer more questions or if there's any issues with the original option agreement, we are here to field those.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Prangy. Um.
They add this this Charlie, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the three acres you're talking about was in there, but they're actually gonna be developing five acres in their proposal.
Correct. There there may be more, depending on the size of the certified map, it might be bigger than three acres, yes. And then they will pay the additional over and above the three acres that we agreed to originally as a as an incentive to develop on that parcel.
Okay, thank you, Charlie, for clarity. Thank you, Mr. Prangy. Jeff Luther, go ahead, please.
I'd like to make a motion authorizing the execution of the document.
Jeff Luther with a motion. Is there a second to that motion? Mary, go ahead, please.
I would make a uh I would second Jeff's motion.
Okay, so motion made and seconded to um regarding the proposed option agreement amendment with Hidden Valley Commercial Properties LLC in the city of Menominee. Uh, we're gonna need a roll call vote with that. Kelly?
Solberg?
Yes.
Schluh?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Sommerfeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Traxler?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Sweeney?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to six C, proposed letter of intent with Baton Stall to lease additional city hall space. Office space here in this building. And uh that is the space that used to be occupied by um Dunn County Economic Development. Uh, Mr. Prangy?
Yeah, correct, Mr. Mayor. We received a letter. It was presented in your pack, I think, at the last meeting where Dunn County EDC is looking to vacate the premises at the end of the year, even though they do have an existing lease with the city. I don't think we want to be bad landlords and and hold them exactly to that, seeing as how they're they're going through some big changes at that organization. And given the fact that we do have a current tenant that's interested in uh leasing that space beginning January one. So I think it's a win-win for everybody. We can lease the space. And then also Baton Stall is looking at possibly some additional spaces vacant down that wing in the future, or maybe even some other space in this building. But uh they've been a very good tenant. Uh, this will provide a their their lease rates a hair bit higher than the nonprofit was. So administration will recommend authorization to approve this uh this additional space. And again, it does extend the lease, I believe, one year.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Prangy. So if anybody has any questions, we can answer any questions, or if you'd like to make a motion, we can do so at this time. Okay, Chad Slu, go ahead, please.
What is what does Baton Stall do?
Mr. Prangy?
There, I think a structural structural, I'm saying that. Concrete, concrete structural engineering, they they sub out to uh other engineering firms like Cedar Corp. I think Cedar uses them, right, Charlie?
We have partnered with them. They they broke off from County Concrete, I believe, so they're 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 concrete structural engineers.
Okay. Okay, go ahead, Chad.
I'd like to make a motion uh approving the lever of intent, authorizing the execution of a lease with Baton Stall.
Okay, thank you, Chad. A motion's been made. Is there a second to the Chad's motion? Go ahead, Randy.
Um, I'd like to second Chad's motion.
Okay, great. Motion's been made and seconded. For the proposed letter of intent with Baton Stall to lease additional city hall office space. Any other discussion? If not, um, all in favor of said motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Brings us down to six D, proposed twenty twenty-one, twenty-two contract with Dunn County Humane Society. And this is a contract uh per capita contract. I'll let Mr. Prangy talk about it.
Again, the city's been operating under this contractual arrangement probably for the last, I year or something like that. I think since the mayor's properly taken over, we've really got into this per capita. Very small increase. It is included in the budget you just adopted. So we're just asking approval of that arrangement, which also would put it in next year's twenty twenty-two budget as well, the following years. Again, it it is just changes on the per capita established by the state and that's done in September. So with that, can answer questions. They've done a good job to the best of our ability and my knowledge and haven't had any issues.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Prangy. Uh, any questions? Otherwise, it now would be time to make a motion. Ryland, go ahead, please.
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve the two-year contract with Dunn County Humane Society.
Okay, thank you, Ryland. Is there a second to that motion? Okay, Randy, go ahead, please.
Second Ryland's motion.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded for the twenty-one, twenty-two contract with Dunn County Humane Society. Uh, with that, roll call vote, please.
Schluh?
Absolutely.
Erdman?
Yes.
Sommerfeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yeah.
Traxler?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Sweeney?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That brings us down to six E, proposed twenty twenty-one, twenty-three contract with Clavon Property Assessment for Revaluation Maintenance Assessment Services. And I'm gonna let Lowell bring in on this one. Lowell, Mr. Prangy?
Similar to the uh the previous item, this this amount was included in the budget for this upcoming year, a hundred seven thousand one hundred dollars. That additional, give or take seventy thousand dollars is for the hiring of additional employee to go employees and staff to go out and do the evaluation. They need to pretty much go door-to-door and as much as their ability, you know, do the re-measuring, re-looking, photo-taking, all of that. They're trying to do that in a one-year cycle, and then they would try and put it into effect uh beginning in twenty twenty-two. Again, if you look at, I think it's page ten of ten that was in your pack, then their their assessment contract was down to thirty-four thousand dollars and then is increased by a cost of living uh rate in that following year. So it's a three-year deal. Um, and that did impact what we could do with the contingency account this year. And the flip of that, we're down to eighty percent. We are on notice for the second time from the state, and we do need to take that serious and do something to correct that uh deficiency.
Thank you, Mr. Prangy. Any questions for Mr. Prangy or anybody who'd like to entertain a motion? Lee, go ahead, please.
Yeah, I'd make the motion to approve the contract with Kevin uh property management for the next three years.
Okay, thank you. A motion's been made. Is there a second to to Lee's motion? Mary, go ahead, please.
I will second Lee's motion.
Okay, thank you. A motion's been made and seconded to uh proposed twenty twenty-one, twenty-three contract with Clavon Property Assessment for Revaluation Maintenance Assessment Services. With that being said, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Erdman?
Yes.
Sommerfeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Traxler?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Sweeney?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Schluh?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That brings us down to six F, proposed twenty twenty-one, twenty-three agreement with the Menominee Rural Fire and Ambulance District. Again, Mr. Prangy?
Uh, I will start it out, and I believe the fire chief is out there, too, if you would like to get ready to make any comments. He. Uh, Denny, we've opened up your mic, so you you speak it well. You can speak it well when when Lowell lets you, I guess. I'll do it really quickly here again. Denny and I met with the representatives of the Rural Fire Board back around October twelfth, the day of the memo that was in the pack. The representatives being um the the chair, I think vice chair, if I said that correctly, agreed to what was being proposed by the fire chief. Again, this is a multi-year contract. It's on it's it's up for renewal at this point. Usually goes through three-year cycles. Uh, we did propose or Denny proposed a fairly significant catch-up fees for both the the um fire protection, basically the standby service, and then also the per capita fee for the ambulance service of a dollar per year. Uh, so increasing to twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four. With that, Denny, I stole most of your thunder, but why don't you uh you can take it from there? No, I think we were just looking to try and get the rural in line with the services that they're using. And by the end of this three-year contract, I believe we're going to be very close. Again, it's a fairly significant increase with the fire protection slash again standby service going from forty-one thousand will be up closer to probably sixty thousand in three years. And again, that per capita, a dollar per year is uh the prior years, it was twenty-five cents per year. So uh Denny did a good job of of negotiating that and um puts us more in line, like he said, with the rest of the world. So we are recommending approval by council. This has been approved by the Rural Fire Board uh already.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Prangy. Thank you, Denny Claus, um, chief.
Class.
Ass? Oh, okay, you got class. Thanks. All right, very good then. What uh? I don't have any questions for anybody. Does anybody have any questions? Lee, go ahead, please.
Yeah, I just got a general question. How many of the fire units are owned by the uh by the Rural Fire District and I that offset any cost that we would have had if we don't own all the trucks?
Okay, Denny?
With what we've got, can you hear me, Lee?
Yep.
Um, when we look at the overall fleet, um the rural owns quite a few um compared to what the city is, simply because we have to take our water out to the rural. Obviously, we don't have a hydrant system, along with the brush trucks uh for grass fires, so. So we have talked about uh and we'll get into this, I'm sure, in another couple of weeks on some CIP stuff with the engines and and more cooperative use of equipment, so. But from a from a physical standpoint, this is Lowell, it's probably sixty, forty, Lee, that the rural owns more lack of a better word, tires on the ground than the city does. But again, as Denny noted, we probably don't need as quite as many in the city. And and they do pay their share of maintenance. So the rural pays us. We bill them for oil and we pay them for grease and we, you know, charge all that out back out to the rural on their equipment, so.
Okay, thank you.
That was a good question, Lee. I was curious myself, but you came up with the question, so good job. All right, um, that brings us back to the council. If anybody'd like to make a motion supporting uh the twenty-one, twenty-three agreement with the Menominee Rural Fire and Ambulance District, uh, now would be the time to do so. Jan, go ahead, please.
Um, I'm I move that we accept the contract
Okay.
of the agreement with the city rural fire and ambulance.
Okay, sounds good. Um, is there a second to Jan's motion? Jeff Luther, go ahead, please. Okay, uh, motion made by Jan Tractor, seconded by Jeff Luther for the uh twenty-one to twenty twenty-three agreement with the Menominee Rural Fire and Ambulance District. Uh, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Sommerfeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Traxler?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Sweeney?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Schluh?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, there's no budget transfers tonight. Did I? Nope, okay. So we can go on to the mayor's report. Um pretty exciting stuff around town, I thought. Uh I'm really excited about the ice skating rink. I think that'll be really fun. And um, of course, there's always uh what's that? Who is? What do you got up there, Mr. Idy? What is? Who? What is that? Where's? What are you pulling up, Mr. Idy?
Just, we're going back in time a little bit, Mayor.
What year is this? What year is this?
I think it's eighty-two, eighty-three, early eighties.
Wow, look at that fire hydrant. That's what the fire hydrants look like in eighty-two.
But that is a fire hydrant flowing seventy gallons a minute fully open.
Wow, that's moving. Seventy gallons a minute. Um, so I I'm not sure where Randy Idy is taking us here, but I think he's looking at fire hydrants and things that are really old. There's another picture of somebody standing up against the wall.
Can you li-
Can you make it bigger?
Oh, okay.
Oh, oh, yep. Now I'm kind of starting to understand who that picture is. Oh, there we go. That really tells a story on age, doesn't it? Where does anybody see somebody in that? Where's Waldo? There. Look at that picture. Oh, my goodness. Well, folks, ladies and gentlemen, I I I want you to all know that uh we have an individual here tonight that's been with us since nineteen fifty.
Eighty-one.
In nineteen eighty-one. Supposedly, this is his last official council meeting. I expect him to still be here at uh in a capacity for advisement to the city. But that's Charlie Jones. And uh, thanks, Charlie. You're all done. Oh, for all you've done. I'm sorry. Thanks, Charlie, for all you've done for the city of Menominee. And 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 that's a heartfelt thanks, too.
Thanks, Charlie.
Yay, Charlie.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
We're gonna have cake and ice cream, but it would all be uh Zoom, so I didn't know how that would go over. But look, isn't that a great picture? He looked really good back then. Speech?
At first thought, I thought it was the mayor.
I did, too.
Does look a little like my son, actually. But uh
Comments?
Comments, Charlie?
Uh, again, I'd like to thank you, Mayor, for the nice words. And Randy, wherever the hell you got the pictures, uh, I owe you. But uh, no, it's it's been a pleasure working with the city. Uh, it's been thirty-nine years since I've been here. I think I've been attending these meetings since about ninety-six on a regular basis. Uh, so it's been a long time and it's uh it's been a pleasure working with the the mayors and the city councils and the city staff through the whole time. And thank you for putting up with me.
Our pleasure.
Hey.
And if and if anybody really had to put up here with you, I think it would be probably Lowell. And I remember Pam Link uh having a few words to say about you every now and then, too. So Lowell, you've got some kind words. Kind words, I said, kind, kind words. Kind words, I said, kind, kind words.
Well, Charlie's been here a long time and he's did great and wonderful things. He's been a mentor. He's been my right hand a lot prior to Randy getting here and even after. And he's, he's guided the city well and he deserves a a heartfelt retirement and, and he deserves to, to go on and, and enjoy the rest of his time and the city will function. But we're gonna miss you, so.
Well, there you go. There you go. That sums it up. Well, well said, Mr. Prang.
No, it wasn't, but you know, you put me on the spot. Usually it's he and I arguing either politics or a project or something like that. But you know, we survived and we still talk to each other, so.
Well, I remember the last few years, it's been arguing about money normally, tick districts, and we're making a lot of money and no, we're not. And we gotta have this done and we gotta have that done. And, and Lowell's pencil is always a lot sharper than Charlie's for some reason. But again, thank you, Charlie, for your dedicated service. And, you know, I wanted to say you're gonna be missed. Well, you are gonna be missed. And your replacement, I'm sure will do well, Kevin. If, you know, if we have any, if you need any advice, you can always go and call Charlie. So that's kind of a, a good thing. And we, we're really blessed to have Cedar Corp here in Menominee and have them be a home-based company here in Menominee. So again, appreciate all the years, Charlie. And now you get to enjoy your time off even more. So with that being said, I'll get back to the mayor's report. I don't have a lot of mayor reporting to do. You know, the, the cheese factory is, is coming along nicely. The camera won't cooperate. And I don't know, I guess it doesn't really matter. But anyways, the cheese factory's coming along nicely. I was gonna cut the budget on salt this year, but Lowell wouldn't let me. So we're gonna have salt and street plowing. And other than that, the city's doing well. Waiting for ice to be made so that we can get out there and do some ice skating. So with that, I'll open up the floor to anybody at city council if they want a discussion item. Go ahead, please. Okay, oh, Ryland, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand. Go ahead, Ryland.
Um, yeah, I guess I feel like this is a that we need to bring back the discussion about a mask ordinance. That, you know, there's more people getting sick every day than we had last time. We discussed it. And our local hospitals are full. And things are not looking good. And Wisconsin is, has just over 60% compliance with people wearing masks in public spaces. Which is part of why we have this problem. So I know people said that they want it left up to their own judgment, but it looks like their own judgment is not cutting it.
Okay.
So I feel like we should bring back the ordinance discussion that we had on the table before.
Okay, thank you, Ryland. We'll take that under advisement and we'll see if we can put a plan of action together for you. We have been on Zoom meetings with the, with the, what's that group called?
Dunn County Recovery Team.
Yeah, the Dunn County Recovery Team. And yes, the feedback, the hospitals are full, 17 area hospitals, they are all full, full. So it's not a good time to break your leg or otherwise. Not
Well, and with, with bad weather and, you know, this is the time of year where people shovel their walks or go into your hunting and have heart attacks. And there's no place for you to go.
Right. It is a serious problem. I lost a friend of mine I sang with for many years recently this last weekend. And I have other people that I know too now that have passed away from it. So it's a serious situation. I would advise everybody wear a mask at all times and hand washing. My wife is working with a situation where there are COVID workers, COVID test positive workers and other people around the community that I hear about on a daily basis. It is a serious situation and we will take that under advisement and see how we handle it. Ryland, thank you very much. Mary, go ahead, please.
This is kind of a question for Randy Idy. I had a, a neighbor actually lives on the corner of Fifth and Twentieth, and that's up by the high school. And she says she can't count how many near accidents and accidents have happened on Fifth and Twentieth. And she's wondering if, she, she says there's confusion with the little, the little stop signs like we had at the other entrance to the high school. And she's wondering if there's, there's something that can be done for clarification. She says people think
Mary froze.
Totally stop. So this is a bad place to talk to you about it, but I'll, I'll be in touch with you. She said even flags, you know, like you have in other places. I don't, I don't know, but I just want
Mary, we lost you for a little bit. We got to the point where there was confusion at Fifth and Twentieth and the whole feed froze.
Yep, the feed froze right when you said the little stop sign. So go ahead and start from there.
The little stop signs are causing issues again. Like on the other entrance to the high school. So I just wanted to put it on your radar and I'll talk to you about it further and I'll give you the lady's name who called me. So that we can see if there's something relatively easy and cheap that we can do.
Yep. Okay, we'll take, we'll take a look at it, Mary. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you, Mary.
Anything else, Mayor?
Okay, anybody else have any discussion items they'd like to bring forward? Last call? Okay, we're gonna move on to claims. If we want to pay the bills, we can make a motion to do so.
Is there revised list? Is there revised?
Revised just went out.
Oh, I'm sorry. The revised list just went out. So Mary, you got your hand up.
Yep. I would make a motion to pay the, the claims on the revised list as presented.
Okay, thank you, Mary. Is there a second to that motion? Okay, Jeff Luther. Jeff Luther, go ahead, please.
I'll second Mary's motion.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Yes, go ahead, Chad Slue.
I have a question, the $40,000 for the dumpster. What is that?
Okay, I'll turn it over to, let's see. Maybe Mr. Prang, I guess, would be able to answer that the easiest.
Chad, are you talking about Menominee disposal?
Yeah, like $37,000 or something.
Okay, so $37,000, that includes our quarterly fee that we pay for solid waste to be disposed of. But something on, on the budget is $17 overdrawn, so that's why they came to you. But that is a realistic number. We pay them quarterly out of the solid waste utility for, for disposal out at the site and also recycling out there.
So that's keeping that solid waste side going quarterly.
So that's not, not just the airport, then?
No, 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 no. The airport's what's over budget by $17.
Oh, okay. It looked like it was $37,000 at the airport.
No, it's, it's the total bill from Menominee disposal, but $17,000 of that, or $17 is, is overdrawn at the airport.
Right on.
Okay, any other questions for Lowell or staff? Okay, with that being said, we have a motion and a second to pay the bills. Roll call vote, please.
Luther.
Yes.
Traxler.
Yes.
Sutherland.
Yes.
Sweeney.
Yes.
Swabs.
Yes.
Merrill.
Yes.
Solberg.
Yes.
Schlue.
Yes.
Erdman.
Yes.
Summerfeld.
Yes.
Okay, I didn't see a license list, so I don't think there is one. Nope. Okay, so a no close session tonight. So if anybody'd like to make a motion to adjourn, now would be the time to do so.
Yeah, I, I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion made by Nate Merrill. Is there a second to that motion? Jeff Luther, go ahead, please.
I'll second his motion.
Okay, motion made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor of said motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Everybody, please be safe out there and tell everybody, wear their mask, good hand cleaning. Please be safe. Thank you, everybody. Good meeting tonight.
Thank you.
Good.
Good night.
Bye.